Amber live.
Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to the September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty Board of Education Meeting for the Phelps Clifton Springs Central School District. Sarah, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead with roll call in this. I'm going to read your names. If you could just say present or here, it just makes it easier on Zoom. Sarah Butler.
Here.
Tracy, Tracy Marshall.
Present.
Matt Sickles.
Present.
Jake Amadon.
Present.
Sherry Shirvin.
Present.
Matt Murphy.
Present.
Tracy Altman.
Present.
Todd Freeland.
Here.
Ryan Davis.
Here.
Mike Reefstec.
Present.
John Lombardi.
Present.
Amber Wiltz, present. May I have a motion for the approval of the agenda?
The moved.
May I have a second?
Okay.
Is there any discussion? Hearing no discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on to item number four, the superintendent's report concerning the first day of school. Mr. Sickles?
Okay, well, it was great to have kids back on campus. It was a great first day of school, albeit a little bit different than than we've ever experienced in the past. So at UPK through three, we had the first cohort of students on campus today, and I gotta say that things went very well. I think we're really excited to be back on campus. Our UPK and kindergarteners, some of them for the first time, staff, really excited to be interacting with staff, with students again. Our procedures for the first day went very well with arrival, this festival lunch, this choice, which has worked out, but a lot of reasons to be hopeful. Reports from four through twelve on remote learning also off to a good start. Obviously, some technological glitches, which could be anticipated here and there with gym links and passwords, different things like that. But the reports on remote attendance are very high across grade levels. So it's glad, you know, really glad to hear that our students are engaging and will continue to monitor and improve upon our practices as we go on. We know it's different for everyone, students, families, teachers, staff, but everybody's adjusting. But while people were tired at the end of the day, I think they were feeling pretty good to have that first day under their belts and felt like it went pretty well. There's a lot going on, you know, a lot of moving parts to all of this that we're monitoring. There's trails pick up going on throughout the week at the secondary level. I hear Mr. Giancurcio hit about thirty thousand steps today facilitating that, so. But I will say again, while it's different and while it's not what everybody would want or hope for for the first day of school in terms of having everybody here on campus, I think we're off to a solid start. And there's only reason to be optimistic in terms of looking ahead with hope of bringing more grade levels back on campus. So hopefully we'll have an opportunity to have the other administrators interact with the board in the future and tell you in more detail how it's going, but a really good, exciting start to school.
Great to hear. Moving on to item number five, the presentation on Fall Sports two thousand and twenty. I think that's you again, Mr. S-
That is also me, so let me share my screen. Okay, hopefully everybody can see that. So on Thursday, we had a special meeting to initiate the conversation at the board level of the New York State Public High School Guidance regarding the proposed return to inter-scholastic athletics fall. This following governor's announcement that sports couldn't start as early as September twenty first. Last Thursday was board's first opportunity to really engage with the guidance and engage with each other about the guidance. And as you recall, you really kind of dug deep into it and analyzing, you know, obviously the benefits of athletics, but some of the challenges that we'll need to overcome as we move forward. So it was a pretty rich conversation. I know one that grabbed the interest and the attention of our community. We're following up tonight with the goal of taking action with regard to fall sports. Just want to cut right to the chase and begin my presentation with the recommendation that I'll be making to the board in consultation. So, there we go. So in consultation with the athletic director, the business administrator, and the director of facilities, as superintendent of schools, I will be recommending to the Board of Education that you approve the participation of Midlake student, Midlake student athletes in fall twenty twenty interscholastic athletics at the varsity, junior varsity, and modified levels, consistent with Section Five, New York State Public High School Athletic Association, and New York State Department of Health Guidelines, and that you authorize me and/or my designee to take all reasonable steps necessary throughout the season for the health and safety of students. So just want to start right off that, that we're very excited to offer these athletic opportunities to our students. We value, as our list here and was included in our presentation on Thursday, we value all the many benefits that interscholastic athletics provide our students. We realize that especially our students at the older grade levels have made tremendous sacrifices as a result of the COVID nineteen pandemic and their prolonged school closure and beginning of the school year and remote instruction. And all of the positive benefits of athletics are compounded during this time period. So we feel strongly that while there are some challenges that we'll have to manage and overcome, we feel very strongly and confident that these opportunities should be offered to our student athletes. So I can, I can speak to any of these, but we went through these on Thursday night, and I don't think anybody had any issue or would argue with any of these or other benefits of interscholastic sports. Just to kind of give you a sense of where we are in case of any questions regarding this recommendation, these numbers are in-progress numbers. They're dated nine fourteen twenty today. Families, students are signing up through family ID indicating their interest. These numbers we expect to go up because the deadline, you know, has passed. Families can still sign up, so may have been waiting for what was going to happen. But these are current numbers compared to last year's numbers. Not going to read through these, but just sort of give you an opportunity to look. You know, certainly we expect some of these numbers to jump up. You will see that while we have varsity JV and modified levels in girl's sports, we've had varsity and modified A, boy soccer, modified A is seventh, eighth, and ninth grade. Here are the numbers for varsity and modified cross-country, and then varsity and modified girls' swimming and diving. Again, you know, we expect these numbers to come up. You know, that these are in progress, that zero, we certainly don't expect that to stay there, nor would we think that the four on the modified cross-country would stay put. Varsity golf and varsity tennis. Tennis is an area that we will have to watch. There were six members on that team last year, and John can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe there were five seniors who graduated from that team. This is an area that, that number may or may not climb up high enough to warrant running the team. But that's a program that's sort of on the cusp on an annual basis. Mr. Lombardi, anything you'd like to add to that?
Yeah, I mean, that's correct. There was a bunch of seniors on that tennis team. Now that we've kind of, if everything goes as planned after tonight, I'll really start pushing it now that we'll have some more clarity. I mean, we didn't really have a lot of clarity until last week either, so we'll really start to push that and get our numbers up there.
Thanks, John. Anticipated contests, again, jumped out of order here. Apologize. So based upon a condensed schedule as opposed to a typical schedule, these are maximum numbers of contests that we would anticipate by sport and by level. So you see at the varsity and JV level, they're going to be down a little bit. You'll see a difference here between varsity and JV girl soccer versus varsity boy soccer, and that's a league decision based upon the number of teams. It's one last team in the, the boys league. Is that correct, John?
Yes, there's one last team there. It's because that we had to rework the schedule based on getting rid of non-league games and then making sure that everybody in the league has games. Normally, some of those soccer games have like a little league tournament at the end, so they maybe play each team once, and then you go out and grab a bunch of non-leaguers. But trying to stay in with your area, we're just probably going to play every team, every school twice.
And again, I want to make the point that these are, you know, th- these are what we anticipate. There are going to be some scheduling difficulties just due to the content condensed nature of the season, daylight, coordinating with other schools, and their transportation challenges. So, you know, the, these sports aren't guaranteed to have exactly these number of contests, but this is the general. Cross-country in the neighborhood of seven to eight, that's very much subject to change, correct, John?
I'm sorry, what was that? I didn't catch-
On the cross, the cross-country, that seven to eight is a really an estimate at this point?
Yes, they're still finalizing some of the league matches there, just because of the, the nature of the way the guidance reads of how many teams can be in one area at a time.
Okay. And then varsity golf and varsity tennis. Again, typically at the varsity level, maybe two less contests in general. The board had asked for budgeted or anticipated costs for these programs. So again, the, the high-risk fall sports of football cheerleading and boys' and girls' volleyball have been postponed to March first to what they're calling fall sports season two. So we've simply rolled over or deferred those budgeted funds, you know, associated with those sports to the spring. But these are the estimated costs of program costs and transportation costs of these programs, and this is at all levels. So if girl soccer, it's modified JV and varsity, boy soccer, modified varsity, and so on. Has to do with, you know, the number of contests, the number of levels of each team. But these are basically the original budgeted amounts. Any fewer contests will offset any additional costs associated with supervision or staffing or anything of that nature. We do not anticipate going over the budgeted amounts in any of these areas. Tracy Marshall, is there anything you'd like to add on the budgeting side of this?
No, I think you hit upon it. Again, these are what we have in the budget. We anticipate spending what we had in the budget just due to, even though there's less contents to be transported to, we may have to have a few more buses for the contest, given the spacing of the athletes on the bus. So we've pretty much just taken that into account and are using our budgeted figures for this slide.
Okay. So, you know, even though it is our recommendation that we approve and move forward with the fall season, that doesn't mean there are not challenges, and I know I had this titled, you know, Concerns and Obstacles on, on Thursday. And the reality is that, given, you know, the COVID nineteen situation and the New York State Public High School Guidelines and New York State Department of Health Guidelines, there, there are challenges. They exist. We need to be eyes wide open about those and know going in that we have to deal with those. So again, there are going to be some issues around flexibility versus consistency with face covering, strength physical activity, and I think parents and student athletes need to prepare themselves for that, that they will see differences from opponent to opponent, level, level, level by level, team by team, even within our own athletic program. But that is, that is something that I think you're going to see a wide range of practices about that, that definition of tolerance of a face covering. We still face the challenge of getting remote students to campus for practices and competitions. Again, New York State Education Department has clarified that districts are not required to transport students home to school for sports. But, and we also know that our district lacks that capacity to do so. And I know that we are not alone in this region in having that barrier because you're talking about trying to get students from their homes to campus at exactly the same time that we're bringing students home to school. We just don't have that capacity. Transportation in general is probably going to be the challenge that drives our scheduling process the most. Again, because of, we're going to have to have later start times because our buses won't be back from bringing our kids home from school and have time to clean, clean them and have them ready to go again until four thirty or even four forty-five range. We're definitely going to have to get creative, and I'll talk about some of the potential solutions that will pursue on that. And then in some spaces, not all, adequate space to accommodate spectators and social distancing could be an issue. So some potential solutions that we will look at and investigate again. Later start times, I think, is going to become a common practice across certainly our league and the section. You know, as we have to accommodate our bus availability for away contests and the bus availability of other teams as they travel to us. We will attempt to schedule as many of our away contests on Wednesdays and Saturdays as possible or to schedule them at, at schools, you know, if we can't do Wednesdays and Saturdays and we're forced to go later times, try to do those later times at schools that have lights. We're certainly, certainly have to rely on family cooperation and flexibility regarding transportation from home to school for practices and competitions. As was discussed on Thursday, this is probably more of a reality that modified level parents are accustomed to over the years. But JV could be an issue where, you know, students are less likely to drive. Varsity level, you have more students who do drives. That might be a solution. But that's certainly an area where we'll need some family cooperation. We, we will certainly investigate allowing family transportation to and away, to and from away contests to help minimize capacity on our buses and avoid having to set the second bus to a single contest. And then possibly, again, a lot of, a lot of people pointed out the difference between outdoor sports and indoor sports, and swimming and diving is our only fall indoor sport. And this is an area where we may have to seriously consider not allowing spectators simply because it's not a large area, and in order to accomplish the social distancing of the student athletes when they're not competing or, you know, when they're not in the pool, and then coaches, trainers, other required personnel, there simply may not be enough room in the pool area to accommodate spectators. That's certainly a concern that we have, that we think is a real one. Investigate other ways, you know, see if there are technological opportunities to, for, for parents and loved ones to watch their, their students compete. But that's just an area that is, under the circumstances, could be difficult to accommodate spectators. John, Mike, if either of you want to chime in there on capacity of that area? Good? Okay. All right. These are just reminders of where we stand with fall sports. Again, the governor authorized fall sports to begin on September twenty first. Low and moderate risk sports originally, high-risk sports could practice only, but they were subsequently postponed by New York Public High School Athletic Association, March first. Guidance came out on September fourth. Local decisions as to whether to run sports on September ninth, again, the high-risk sports related to March first. Start of traditional spring sports pushed April nineteenth. On September eleventh, on Friday, two things happened. One, New York State Public High School Athletic Association put out an updated guidance document that mostly just embedded all the, the date changes. And then on, also late on September eleventh, Section Five officially approved sports to begin on September twenty first. So these are just some important dates. We now essentially are planning for four seasons. Our traditional fall sports season, our winter sports season, fall sports season two, which is currently cheerleading, football, and volleyball, though other sports could potentially get moved to that season. And then the traditional spring sports season with a start date pushed back to April nineteenth. So these are just, this was in the last slide presentation on Thursday, but this is just a reminder of the important dates moving forward. Next step, so hopefully a district decision tonight based upon my recommendations, so tonight's meeting. And then assuming a positive outcome, we'll make fall coaching appointments at our regular September board meeting next Monday, the twenty first. And then planning, scheduling, implementation will all begin immediately if approved. Because there are a lot of details. I know that John's phone will start to ring and email will blow up as he starts to work with other schools to build schedules. And then while some league decisions have been made, I know that meetings are ongoing and more decisions are probably pending. John, anything you'd like to add on that end?
Yeah, we have a Wayne Finger Lakes meeting coming up on Thursday, and we've already been in contact back and forth, putting together some Google forms and things like that just to try to do best practices for what home events would look like. So all, all of us are on the same page and that we're not, one school district's not doing something different than the other. And that, that way, parents, when they travel from one site to the next site, they kind of know what to expect at each event, and it makes, you know, it just makes everything smoother for everybody involved.
And you, even then, you might see differences, you know, regarding, you know, again, anything from face coverings to spectators being allowed or not, depending upon the nature of different sites at other schools. Questions? And follow-up discussion?
I'd just like to make a comment. I, I first wanted to thank the community members that reached out to us through our emails to let us know what you were thinking about this. This was a very heavy lift. That was a, a really deep, deep document to try and digest. So thank you, and it was very evident by the people that reached out to us how important they really felt athletics were for their children. I also wanted to thank my fellow board members, because I really felt like that was a heavy lift. Also, just trying to digest that document on Thursday, and I really felt like we looked at it from all angles in, in order to make an educated decision around something that, that deep discussion needs to happen. And lastly, I wanted to thank the administration and the leadership team for digging in and showing us how we could make this work. So thanks. I appreciate that.
Good.
I'll go ahead and stop this so people can see each other a little better. I don't know if there's any follow-up discussion before the, the next agenda.
Although I was glad to see that you're recommending all levels of, of sports being played. You know, I did, in the conversation last time, felt like those great schools were leaving off modified, and that was, that I'm glad we're not. Other than that, I'm all good with, with-
And, and I think, and then John might be able to chime in. I, we won't know, you know, probably, you know, we'll find out over the next couple of days officially what other schools in our league are doing and what impact that has on our modified schedules. You know, based on what other schools feel like they can support, but that is one area that could impact the number of contests. John, I don't know, you have anything you want to add?
I, I have a feeling there's a lot of schools in the Wayne Finger Lakes having the same exact meeting tonight. So when I get to that meeting this week, I'm sure there'll be more information passed along as far as who's fielding what teams and things like that, so.
Anyone else? Going once, going twice? Okay, on to item number six, new business. May I have a motion to approve the following resolution? Be it resolved upon the recommendation of Matthew Sickles, Superintendent of Schools, to authorize student participation in fall interscholastic sports beginning on September twenty first, two thousand and twenty, at the varsity, junior varsity, and modified levels, consistent with Section Five, New York State Public High School Athletic Association and New York State Department of Health Guidelines, and to further authorize the superintendent of schools and/or his designee to take all reasonable steps necessary throughout the season to ensure the health and safety of students, staff, and spectators.
I make a motion to approve the resolution.
Second.
Last time, any further discussion on this? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Amber, at this point, I'm going to suggest that we excuse John and Mike.
For sure. Thank you so much.
Enjoy their evenings and thank them both for their, their contributions to this process.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Lords are back, baby.
All right. Okay, now we can move on to item seven, another presentation by Mr. Sickles, the budget update for this school year, two thousand and twenty, two thousand and twenty-one.
Okay, I think we're going to kick off with Tracy Marshall. Tracy, you want to share it, or you want me to? Okay, so just to set up Tracy here a little bit, I know that this is something that came up in our discussion on Thursday in relation to sports, and I know it was something that caused quite a bit of concern and consternation that we were, we were discussing finances in relation to athletics. But we also knew as an administrative team and as a board that we would be discussing the status of the two thousand and twenty-one budget at this meeting. And we all have been reading updates from the state level regarding this budget, and, and hopefully people stick around and see some of the challenges that are ahead of us in the coming months. So I'll kick it over to Tracy to, to lead us off, and then I'll chime in as we go.
Great, thanks, Matt. Can everybody see the screen, the presentation, okay? Good. Is my sound okay? I know that there was some trouble historically here, so awesome, thanks. Um, so what I want to do tonight is kind of give a high-level overview of the state financial situation and how that impacts the two thousand and twenty-one budget for the district. We'll talk about the economic conditions facing us due to COVID nineteen. We'll talk about our overall state aid revenue in detail. Some current revenue reductions that we're already experiencing through the state aid cuts, some appropriation- Some appropriation reductions that we have taken, um, already this school year. And then I'd like to talk a little bit about our COVID expenses that, um, we've had to implement since the, um, mandated health and safety guidelines have come out in order to have students return to school. So due to the COVID nineteen pandemic, New York State, like the rest of the country, is experiencing, um, revenue shortfalls. So New York State's revenue is projection for shortfalls about eight point two billion dollars. So in order to, um, close this gap, the Division of Budget has announced they are going to start withholding twenty percent of our state aid payments. And indeed, in August, they started to do this. Um, we receive our state aid payments, um, according to a fixed schedule set by the legislator. It's lawful, um, payment schedule. So we're not seeing a twenty percent overall all at once. As those payments become due, and I'll have some examples in a couple of slides, they're taking twenty percent of that particular payment. So they're coming in stages little by little, but as we get into the fall, our payments kind of pick up. Um, so that's where we could see the biggest amount of aid being withheld. Um. This is all, of course, if we do not receive federal aid. Um, if you've listened to this, the governor, um, he's advocating for federal aid to help offset this twenty percent reduction that will be experienced in in school districts. To date, we have not heard of any federal aid forthcoming. So we're assuming that they're going to be, um, staying with the twenty percent aid reductions moving forward at this point. You may recall back in the spring, we talked about a pandemic adjustment that was on our final state aid proposal that was, um, approved in April. That was about two hundred and fifty four thousand dollars. So the state had withheld two hundred and fifty four thousand dollars at that time to offset their budget, um, gap. And then it was, which was then, um, restored to us through the Federal Cares Act. So that's an example of the federal government coming in to offset a reduction in state aid. Um, and that's kind of equaled out. Now, moving forward, um, if that pandemic adjustments carry forward into another year, I don't know if we'll have the Federal Cares Act, um, to restore it for us in the future. Um, and also we have balanced our twenty twenty one budget with a set tax levy rate, and we assumed our full state aid payments. So any reduction that comes to us in this point of time would have to, um, would cause a revenue gap for us, frankly. And that we would only be able to eliminate that through budgetary reductions.
So Tracy, if I could just chime in before you move to the next slide. So two really important points here to emphasize is that you know, the, the governor has continued to say, you know, talk about a potential aid reduction of up to twenty percent if a federal stimulus package is not approved. And that has led many people to believe that that it hasn't happened yet, that it's still something that is out potentially in the future, but that it has not occurred. It's important for people to understand. And that is that while it has been offered as a if then situation, it's already happening. Is that the State Division of Budget has already, as you will see with specific numbers, um, begun to withhold twenty percent of our aid payments, and that's a concern. And then the other piece is, is that yes, as many people have pointed out, the community approved our budget in the spring. But that budget has two sides to it. Has the expense side and the revenue side. And the expenses have to be balanced by the revenues. And if the revenue, which fifty eight percent of our revenue comes from state aid, that revenue is reduced, that creates that revenue gap that Tracy spoke about. That's what really creates a potential problem for us and all public school districts in New York State moving forward. An interrupter?
Oh, no, fine. So, um, moving forward, so this is our total twenty twenty one state aid package. Um, the foundation aid is the aid that we get based on need, those various factors that go into that figure. But that's a formula based figure. The BOCs in the, all the way down to building aid are what we call expense based aids. So we get aid based on expenses that we incurred in the previous year. So these are estimates of the aid that we'll receive based on our BOCs expenses in nineteen twenty. One point seven million dollars of that expense will come back. About seventy six percent of our expenses are aidable. The excess cost aid, which is about nine hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, that's an aid that's based on, um, costs that exceed our, um, allocated per student, um, monetary amount for special needs students that are private or public placements. So we get the differential, um, on those placements back. Instructional materials aid, that's for textbooks, hardware, software, and that's on a per pupil basis. Um, transportation aid is based on actual expenditures in the previous year. We're about ninety percent transportation aid. So every dollar that we spend, we get ninety cents back. And our building aid is based on our debt service or our debt payment schedule for the previous projects that the district has, um, bonded, um, over a term of thirty years. Those are the amount of payments that we have to make, and then the state will repay us for, um, making those payments. UPK is a, a grant fund. It's not included in our general fund budget. I wanted to include it here because there has been some talk previously about reducing this, this grant funding for this program. While this isn't in what we call the general fund budget that's approved by the voters, this is also on the list of potential reductions in state aid that the governor could look at.
Can I ask a quick question? So that total state aid on the bottom is what we are anticipating getting back in our payments, and that is the total that they're talking about taking twenty percent of throughout this year? Do, am I understanding that correctly or no?
Right, so I have another slide coming up, but it will show it a little bit more in detail. The total aid that was allocated to us on our state aid run back in April was twenty one point eight million. We didn't know if that was just going to apply to our foundation, the reduction to the foundation aid or any of these other areas until recently. Um, the governor has started to, or the state has started to withhold, um, a portion of our BOCs aid and our excess cost aids that were payable in August. So it's our assumption that the plan at the Division of Budget is to withhold twenty percent across the board. And I'll show you some scenarios that kind of speak to that a little bit better. But as Matt mentioned, we're fifty eight percent state aid and we're thirty nine percent tax levy. So we're at about a ninety seven percent reliant on those two revenue sources. It's difficult to make those up in other areas. And at this point in time, with our budget being set, we can't change the tax levy. So all we have to rely on is the fact that we're assuming that we're going to get full state aid. And when that doesn't happen, go back to what we were talking about earlier, you have to adjust the budget somewhere for that shortfall.
And just like I can point out on that UPK line, at the end of August, we had a scare where information started coming out, um, from the state level that all UPK grant funds were going to go away. And which we led to some, quite a bit of lobbying and phone calls by us and by school districts across the state. Um, and whether it was a result of those lobbying efforts or not, uh, I know that we spoke to both our state and federal level representatives. Um, but that funding did come through. However, they, they along with that approval, we were also told to prepare for those funds to be reduced. Now, as it turns out, um, we are not fully enrolled. You know, we have not capped out our enrollment in our UPK program. Um, so it, right now, we're in good shape. We, we're frozen. We're, you know, on our, on any new UPK enrollments. Because we may need that room, um, for any reduction to that grant line item, because, uh, we're not. It would be foolish of us to expect that full five hundred and thirty four thousand, um, to be available. Therefore, the fact that our enrollment is lower than anticipated actually is a good thing and gives us room to potentially absorb any reduction in that line.
So moving on, so as we indicated a few slides back, these are the current reduction that, that we have already experienced in our state aid payments. The excess cost aid, again, that is a, um, expense based aid based on certain expenses over a threshold for certain student populations. We had budgeted to receive about one point three million dollars in August, and then the state withheld two hundred and sixty five thousand or twenty percent of that figure. So that's, that's gone. That was, that's already been taken. Same thing in the, in the BOCs aid category. If you notice, this number is a little, is less than the number that was on the previous slide. The number on the previous slide will show the total BOCs aid for the entire year. As I indicated, the state makes its aid payments on a, on a fixed schedule. So this was the first scheduled payment of that larger number of six hundred and one thousand dollars. They withheld twenty percent of that, um, the state at a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So right now, uh, two, close to two million dollars in budgeted payments that, um, the department budget has withheld three hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. And that is um, taken, it's gone. We don't have that as a revenue source at this point anymore. Questions on that? So this was, um, kind of to your point, Amber, talking a little bit about our foundation aid and then all the other aids kind of combined to show a bigger picture of what the reductions could look like if they were implemented in full and in other stages. So the foundation aid is a formula based aid based on need factors, if you will, and student population. Um, that total aid is about fourteen million dollars. Again, initially, um, the thought was that the, the aid cuts would only apply to foundation aid. Um, as I just demonstrated, that is not the case. So looking at certain various, um, scenarios, we, we've done ten percent, fifteen percent, twenty percent. Um, assuming twenty percent to be the worst case scenario and assuming ten percent may be best case scenario with some federal aid relief. Um, it would be between one point four and two point eight million dollar reduction, um, depending on where that falls. In addition, if the reductions continue with our expense based aid or the all other, um, we could be looking at, uh, seven hundred and thirty two thousand to one point four million dollar reduction. So when you get to the bottom lines in any of the scenarios, it's not, um, a real positive outlook financially for the district in terms of moving forward in the school year.
Yeah, I mean, I, I hate to ring the, the alarm, but these numbers can be described in no other way than catastrophic. You know, if, if we had to cut really at any of these levels, you're, you're talking about significant personnel reductions. School districts, you know, by the nature of, of the services that we provide, um, seventy five to eighty percent of our budget is salary and benefits. You know, we are a labor intensive, um, enterprise. So y- you can't close revenue gaps of this size through s- cutting supplies, um, and equipment and things like that. You, you just can't. And when you think in terms of, you know, reductions and how staffing reductions occur by seniority, um, working from the least seniority up, you know, you, your salary and benefits, you're dealing with with positions that each account for anywhere from fifty to eighty thousand dollars apiece. Um, it takes a lot of those to get to even two point one million dollars, let alone four point two million. So this is why we're having this conversation. Um, is to not, you know, dive into the problem solving, you know, we're still at the stage of identifying for a certain problem, but the indicators of the problem are coming more and more. Um, and we want the board and the community to be aware of the potential revenue gap and budget crisis that we face.
So as we work through the school year, we're looking at opportunities where we might be able to offset some of this aid loss through attrition or other, or other ways. Um, in one such way, we have identified as we have a psychologist who is leaving the district for another opportunity. We're not going to replace that position, and that would, um, is going to save us about seventy eight thousand dollars, um, in this school year. That's not the total, but because, um, that, that position will be vacant, um, starting in October, we won't be replacing that. And that will help us um, utilize that seventy eight thousand dollars towards any, any gap that will incur.
So to, to Tracy's point, um, because of the situation we're in, anytime we have a vacancy that's created by resignation or retirement, we have to evaluate our need to, to fill that position and replace that person. Um, and this is an area where, you know, we, we have um, two other school psychologists at, at across the K twelve level. We have three social workers. Um, we have a K six school counselor. We have a seven eight school counselor and three nine twelve counselors. So while they all you know, have different job responsibilities, there are ways to reassign work, um, through the multi system, multi tiered systems to support and, and, and to support our students um, using the remains that we have. Um, but rather than fill this position and risk having to immediately lay that person off. At this point, we're freezing the hiring of that position while we evaluate. And if we were to leave this permanently vacant, then the savings in this year would be the seventy eight thousand and the savings in next year's budget would be, uh, slightly higher than that. But at this point, um, you know, that's where we are in, in evaluating our budget is if a vacancy comes up, we have to question each and every one of them in terms of refilling it or not. Because it, it's, you know, if we have to close a budget gap, it's it's better to do it through attrition or voluntary departure as opposed to forced layoffs.
So in the face of significant budget revenue shortfalls, we've also had to implement, um, the health and safety mandates, mandates for COVID. Um, and as you all know, these, these came, um, mid July, so these were not budgeted for. We didn't predict the pandemic in the budgeting cycle. Um, it's too bad Mike left because he has been doing a tremendous job getting our materials and supplies and our equipment that we needed for our, um, reopening. Um. However, it's expensive. It's a, is expensive endeavor. Um, so we've added some salaries. We've added an aide, um, a cleaner and a nurse. Those positions were needed for health and safety reasons. Um, the cleaner obviously will use to implement, um, increased cleaning of the classrooms, the door handles, um, public areas. The nurse will help with the daily screenings, um, any kind of paperwork or background information we may need. Um, and the aide was added to help assist in the classrooms during, um, certain times and trans- in transitions between meals. Um, Matt may be able to add a little bit on that as well.
Yeah, so just all three of those positions were in last year's budget. Okay, um, the nurse position wa- was being eliminated because it was, at the time, it was a one to one nurse position where the student no longer needed a one to one nurse. So it was an opportunity to be responsive to, you know, diminish student needs and reduce the budget. Um, but because of the increased, um, health needs in the district, that position is be, has been added back. Um, custodial position was absorbed through retirement. But now we need that extra manpower. Um, and the aide position also, um, was absorbed due to diminished student needs in terms of total students needing, um, aid support. But because of the added, um, different procedures and practices that have to take place to support our reopening plan, um, that position, uh, was reinstated and that person was recalled. So those were all three positions that had existed. We attempted. We attempted to absorb them, um, in response to both diminished needs and as cost-cutting strategies, but have had to have them back, all related to COVID and the reopening.
So in addition to additional staffing, we've had to purchase, um, equipment. And this is temperature scanners, um, the partition, the dividers for the clerical desk. So when people walk up, there's that clear divider you guys are all familiar with. Um, when entering offices to kind of keep this separation, um, between people, um, various other types of safety equipment. Um, and right now, we're about eighty-eight thousand dollars. We anticipate we're going to have to purchase more, um, moving forward, but this is just to date to get us open, um, for our, um, students that have returned. Um, operate, operation of materials and supplies. This is PPE. This is mask. This is hand sanitizer. Um, again, I wish Mike was here because hand sanitizer is very expensive and he could quote what, you know, the actual cost is, but it is, you know, it's necessary and we recognize the health and safety benefit. But, um, it's, it's a very costly item for the district. Again, all of these were at zero at the start of the budget and we have had to adjust our budget to these levels. We anticipate meeting these levels on the adjusted budget side, um, even though, um, the expense isn't there yet, um, we certainly will get there rather quickly, in my opinion.
Ju- just one example on the, you know, the hand sanitizer is an example. So we have wall-mounted hand sanitizer dispensers throughout all of our buildings. They were installed prior to closure, um, back in February, March, and we've added since then. Um, I know over the summer, Mike ordered two hundred repl- cases of replacement, you know, filler bottles for those stations. So there were two refills per case, so four hundred units of hand sanitizer. You know, these are just the re- four hundred refills for those wall-mounted units worth fourteen thousand dollars. And, and they, they don't last very, very long, um, because they're in high-traffic areas. That's not to mention the hand sanitizer supplies in individual classrooms, cafeterias, uh, buses, uh, and so on. And, and all these things, um, both cloth and disposable face coverings. Uh, as Tracy mentioned, the polycarbonate clear dividers, that they're all very, very expensive, uh, because we're in competition with, you know, seven hundred-plus school districts in New York State and school districts across the country for these supplies. So they are expensive. So these are the amounts to date and we expect, especially in that material and supply line, for those numbers, uh, to climb, um, through in-person instruction. Let me take this one, Trace.
I was just gonna hand it over to you.
So this one, I mean, is a really a restatement from an earlier slide, but, but this is basically a summary of the comp. Okay, the twenty-twenty, twenty-one budget was developed based on specific expectations of local tax revenue and state aid. Okay, most of our, you know, ninety-seven percent of our revenue comes from those two sources. Fifty-eight percent state aid, thirty-nine percent from local tax revenue. Once the budget is approved, the tax levy is set. So the community, um, approved a tax levy increase of two point seven-five percent over last year. That's it. That's done. So we have no ability, or inclination anyway, to increase the local tax levy. We couldn't if we wanted to. Okay, that is set. Therefore, if state aid, which makes up fifty-eight percent of our revenue, is reduced to the numbers that we showed you, the potential numbers which are significant, the only option for offsetting that revenue gap is to reduce the budget by the corresponding amount. So that is why, you know, this board has a responsibility to filter every decision through a financial lens. That is true always, but it is even more true and more important in these times when we're facing a potential twenty percent loss of revenue. So that's sort of a summary of the problem as it's currently developing. Uh, twenty percent is being withheld. Um, payment by payment, fortunately, our big payments haven't come through yet. Um, some of our smaller ones have and they've only been funded at eighty percent. But the concern is if that trend continues, the division of budget has indicated that it will continue, um, till or unless there is a federal stimulus package. Uh, then, then we're gonna have to make some difficult decisions, uh, sooner rather than later. So. At this point, any questions for Tracy or myself? And then any follow-up discussion the board would like to engage in.
Well, I have a couple of thoughts. If nobody else wants to jump in yet, um. So do you anticipate at any time that that will be an announcement given from our state? Or do you think it's just gonna be quietly taken? Or do you have no clue? How this is going to, I mean, it kind of feels like it's blind, that you're expecting a check and then there's not the whole check there.
Correct. Um, in terms of predicting what's gonna happen at the state level, that, that's difficult. Um, I, you know, certainly think in terms of, you know, any leverage the state levels trying to use to, to get a federal stimulus package. Um, I think the state is trying to hold off on making an announcement. Um, but the public needs to know that they're already, you know, quietly withholding that twenty percent. And it puts the local school districts in a very difficult position. And if you're, those of you who are watching or news from across the state, and I know the board gets the Eclipse Daily put out by, uh, MISBA. Um, you know, there's stories from across the state where especially some of the larger or more urban districts that are even more reliant on state aid than we are, have already, um, started to make significant staffing reductions to offset the loss of aid. And therefore, as a result, have been forced into fully remote instruction because at their diminished staffing levels to, to close the budget gap, they're, they're not able to get kids in person hand-to-hand by the guidance. So that's a great fear. Um, I think across the state is at what point do the, you know, twenty percent here, twenty percent there, twenty percent of this payment, twenty percent of that payment, eventually it's gonna get to the point where that adds up to, we can't, we can't finish out the year at the budgeted amounts. And the problem with closing the gap through reductions is the longer you wait, the more of the money you've already spent. Therefore, you have to cut deeper to get to the same total dollar amount. And that's while, wh- why, while none of us wanna be in this situation and nobody really wants to hear that official announcement, it, it would be better to know so that we can take the action necessary as soon as possible. Good? Uh, you know, the sooner we know, the better. Um, so we can take that.
So when do we get the rest of our funding usually? I mean, when will we know if they continue to, to take this?
So our scheduled payments, we have a September payment for our general aid that will be coming through. Um, it's supposed to be here, um, mid-September. So if that is, um, reduced by twenty percent, we'll know that soon. They, like I said, they don't say anything. We get the payment and then we look at the payment amount and we match it to what we are expecting and then we notice there's twenty percent missing. Um, so there's, um, I, you know, a significant payment coming in September for general aid, um, a larger payment in November. Um, some smaller payments in between there, but we should start to see something again here shortly.
And I will say this, on behalf of the district, um, you know, we have had conversations with our state-level legislative representatives and federal-level, um, representatives, um, trying to implore and impress upon them the importance, um, of a federal relief package because there just is no money at the state level. You know, they're, they're facing a fifteen-billion-dollar gap this year alone and projecting that the impact on, on aid and on budgets for local municipalities will be even worse in the two years following this. Um, you know, without federal funds, um, I think the twenty percent absolutely is a reality. So and anybody wants to chime in or join me in this is, any, I, I just encourage our community members to do what we've been doing, which is reach out to our local legislators or state, but maybe even more importantly at this point, the federal level, um, asking for help.
Matt, I'm glad you brought it up because I think what, what our community should have learned over the past four days, if nothing else, is advocacy really does work. Um, I don't know about, I, I'm pretty sure the rest of the board had the same emails, calls, text messages, Facebook posts, conversations here, there and everywhere from our entire community, the sports parents, everybody that said, we really want you to do this. Um, and that works. Uh, Matt spoke of the, the UPK issue in August and we burnt, we were burning up phones immediately and that, you know, you have to assume move the needle at least enough to get us to September. Uh, and it, it's, it cannot hurt to have the, the calls and, and letters and emails be made to both our state representatives and to our federal representatives because they all talk to each other. And it, it means a little bit when, you know, a couple of board members here and there and, and a few superintendents call, but when your community is reaching out and the community in both directions is reaching out, you're talking about hundreds of calls and letters and emails, thousands. And, and it, it doesn't go unnoticed. Um, is there a chance without a federal stimulus package that we can, you know, get a lifeboat? Probably not, but if you're advocating at the state level, maybe they look to cut elsewhere. And we're not looking at twenty, but we're looking at that ten percent number, which, you know, at this point in time, every little bit helps. Uh, the, the federal stimulus package is essential for our district and districts, not across the state, across the country. Um, we look at it through the lens of what it would impact our program. But the, the greater impact on our communities as a whole is, is just mind-boggling. You're talking about, I mean, just, you know, quick math. We're talking for Phelps-Tupan Springs School District, thirty, thirty-five different positions. That's thirty-five different families that can't put money back into the system. That, so when Matt said catastrophic, that was a no-joke word. It's catastrophic. And cuts like this, you get cuts, you get cuts, you get cuts. Because once you start going down that rabbit hole, there is no end. So advocacy, advocacy, advocacy. And that, and I'm looking over here and at the beginning, yes, there was close to seventy people watching us. Yeah, I hope that people will go back and watch this entire meeting and see the dire straits that school districts across the state are in. Because it, it's going to take effort across the board, not just board members and administrators. But if you're willing to say, hey, I need, I wanna make sure that my kids strap it on cleats this fall, um, the call to arms now is you wanna make sure that they're getting the education that the state had promised us. And that takes effort and advocacy and it has to be constant and consistent. I'll jump off my soapbox.
Well, I totally agree with that too, Ryan. And I think not just, you know, in regards to the cuts, but I mean, hand sanitizer at fourteen thousand dollars, I mean, that's ridiculous. Um, you know, so they can jump in and, and assist with that as well. Um, so definitely a lot of advocacy needs to, you know, happen with everything that's going on right now.
And what's troubling there too, and, and Tracy might be able to provide a little more detail, but FEMA reimbursement of PPE and other COVID-nineteen supplies has been cut off. So that's another avenue of funding, uh, that we've lost.
Yeah, I, you know, there, there's not a whole lot of details they provide with that. The, um, some of the new guidance is stating the, unless you had an actual COVID case, you can't receive funding. Um, districts are still putting in for reimbursement, just hoping that something might come from it. But that's not something we are going to, um, um, yeah.
Be super hopeful about.
There you go.
So, I mean, this is not anything that any of us like to talk about. And while it, it, the word easy could never be descri- used to describe what the situation we're in. An official announcement of an acc- of a cut of X percent across the board would at least define the target, sound the bell that, okay, we need, here's the gap we need to close and we need to get to work. Uh, as an administrative team, you know, we know that this potential gap that we're informing you of or informing the public of exists. And, and we have to roll up our sleeves and start brainstorming and identifying, you know, very sort of quietly in a very hypothetical way as to how would you possibly begin to close a gap of that size? And, uh, that's something that we have to do carefully and thoughtfully. And, and make sure that we are ready to stand behind any recommendations, um, that we make to this board in terms of closing the gap. And I say the gap because there is going to be a gap. There's already a gap. We already had four hundred thousand dollars that we were counting on not come. We already had five hundred thousand dollars that we weren't planning to spend. These spent. So, you know, that's a nine hundred thousand dollar gap that while we had contingency built into the budget as a responsible budgeting strategy, uh, those contingencies don't last long uh, moving forward. In fact, not at all. So there is a gap. There is, you know, it's just a matter of how big it is, but it starts at big and only expands from there.
Um, just a thought, an outside-of-the-box thought, or I don't even know, just a thought. And I don't even know if we are allowed to do this, but is there any way we could just somewhere on our website put up our representatives, just so people had a one-click? If they were interested in reaching out, um, or no? I, I, I just didn't know if we could just do that.
I, it's public information. I don't see why we couldn't.
I mean, moms, if you can do a one-clicker, we can say a lot, but if we got a hun- you know, so I, I just, I don't know. It's a lot.
I think that's a good suggestion.
I think that's a good suggestion.
Yeah.
Get it out there as much as we can.
Making it out right now. We, you know, like I said, we. The one thing we absolutely cannot do at this point is generate new revenue. We, we have no legal options at our disposal. So if faced with a gap. The only thing you can do is reduce the budget.
And possibly moving forward, thinking about where we're bleeding. And if we can eliminate that and how. You know.
Along with the contact information, Matt, the, uh, the couple of those slides would probably be useful just. If you're crafting an advocacy letter or email, it's good to have, you know.
We, we can post the entire presentation. And, and certainly, you know, we encourage anyone watching or anyone who goes back and watch, anybody who has any questions. At all to contact us, you know, we're, we're happy to explain the situation. You know, this is a situation that we all face together, you know. You know, I, I talk to our staff all the time that we are public servants, you know, and. All of us here, you know, that fits. We, we serve this community and, uh, you know, we're eager to engage with the community to. You know, inform and educate everybody about the problem that we face and. Hopefully assist you in helping us advocate.
Anyone else have any thoughts, questions? Oh, you're on a high note. Now we're digesting this.
Uh, are you gonna, are you or Tracy gonna be updating us as we go forward? I mean, I think.
Yeah, I mean. Ultimately, you know. At some point, we can't wait for an announcement anymore.
Right.
At, at some point. There, there, there's going to be that tipping point of twenty percent being withheld where we have to start reducing. You know, we just. Nobody wants to be there. Nobody wants to make the first reduction, but at some point. If an announcement isn't made, we have to make the preemptive move.
And maybe, you know, you could, when your next payment come in, comes in that. We could, I mean, at least it's another marker.
Expect inverted actual.
Well, thank you.
And again, we, we, just so you know, we fully expect twenty percent to be withheld from that next payment. There's been no indicator otherwise. Would you agree with that, Tracy?
Yeah, I agree.
And, and you said that's a big payment, so what would, do you off the cuff know about how much? That would be or no? I mean.
No, I'm, I'm estimating in the two million dollar range.
That would be how much is withheld or how much that.
Payment for September.
So it'd be twenty percent of two million.
Right, so.
Oh, that's, that would be a huge indicator of what's happening. That's a big payment. Okay. Well, thank you for the information.
I can put together a, um. Presentation slide if you want and for Matt, um, of our payment schedule and how much we get during that. Those payment timelines. For the next meeting.
Yeah, that'd be great, I think.
Okay, so on that happy note.
Okay, well. Thank you, um, for giving us that information. Uh, moving on to public comment procedures. I know this is something that we've tried to get going, um, so I'm actually going to pass this on to Tracy. She's done some. Digging and, um, so take it away, Trace. You're on you, sweets.
Ah, sorry about that. Yeah, so, uh, so we definitely, I think, recognize the need to update our. Uh, public comment procedures, um, due to the current circumstances and, and these Zoom meetings, um, and so. Um, we'd like to kind of figure out a way to move forward with our new norms, um, some ideas that we talked, kind of talked about before, um. That are, are out there, I guess, on the table, just kind of want to get everyone's feedback about. Um, we talked about you have to state your name and address, um, when you want to make a public comment. We talked about, um, a limit to the total allotment of public comment time, um. I, I, I think we're. Thinking maybe around twenty minutes total allotment, um, if people think more or less, please let us know. Um, we talked about limiting the amount of time for each individual comment, um, to two minutes or three minutes, um. So Matt and Amber and I are going to be touching base later this week to kind of put some final parameters around this, but just kind of wanted to get your feedback. As to what you think, if there's things we need to add, if there's things. As far as time.
Right, so just to put it in, in a context in terms of meeting format, uh, at this point, um. Given the extension of the executive order with regard to public meetings and. The, the logistics and the, uh, attendance cap of fifty, um, on in-person meetings. I, I think in, in this is something for board discussion as well, is that. The, the, the plan, at least for the time being, is to move forward with virtual, you know, Zoom based meetings. However, there is an opportunity, this, our format right now, this is a closed Zoom meeting. Um, that then is broadcast out through Facebook and the school website. We have another option, which we use for the public hearing on the SRO contract. Which is to set up the meeting in a webinar format so that anybody. On the board, the administration who needs to be part of running the meeting would be panelists. And we would be the only ones viewed, viewable. Uh, but then anyone who wanted to. Ask a public comment would have to join the Zoom meeting as a participant. So we would have a link. On the Facebook page and on the school website that you would click on that link to become a participant of the meeting. Again, we wouldn't be able to see those people. We'd be able to see the number of them. Uh, but then they would have access to the Q and A box. And could then type in their, their name and address and then their comment. And then we could set up a procedure for one of us to identify the person by name and address. And then read their comment as long as it fits within the rules of public comment and, and is appropriate. Until such time that we can get back to in-person meetings. Uh, if people did not want to make a public comment, they could continue to just watch. The meeting on Facebook or on the website, but they wouldn't be able to. Engage through, through public comment, through the Q and A function, they'd actually have to. Get into the Zoom link, um, into the Zoom meeting as a participant in order to do that. So that's the thought right now, that until we can logistically get back to in purpose, uncapped. Board meetings, um, where we don't have to do health screenings and. Ensure social distancing and face coverings and all those things, that we would just switch to that webinar feature. Of Zoom and run it that way. So that, that's sort of the proposal of how to change the format and then. The, the rules that, that Tracy referenced would then be applied, um, as we read those comments.
So some districts have even, I've noticed there have, um. A policy where they, where if they want to make a public comment, they have to send an email to the district clerk. Um, no more than forty-eight hours, no more than within forty-eight hours of the meeting. Um, so there, there's a lot of variety as to how different districts do things, um. Some allow to do just what Matt's talking about and others say you need to contract the district clerk at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. And there's pretty much everything in between, so, um, just kind of what are people's thoughts or ideas, um. And then we'll meet to finalize things later this week.
I think at this point, we just go with what, like, what's going to be the easiest, when it sounds like having that open meeting and then having. You know, Matt or. Sarah, just look at the comments and let us know.
So we would all.
And well, we, that's right, we would all see that, the comments you would.
Right, so the panelists can see the comments. Um, the public participants wouldn't be able to see those and then we would only read them. One, if the person identifies themselves and two, there, you know, there are rules about public comment. There are some topics. You know, that aren't appropriate, can't get into personnel items, can't name people by name, can't get into student privacy issues, things like that, so. We would have to vet them on the fly in the moment in terms of, you know, omitting anything that didn't comply. With those legal rules and requirements, um, but otherwise, you know, and there would certainly be an expectation of. Proper decorum and appropriate language and whatnot. We could read that.
That's an expectation at our board meetings anyway, so I think people are very well aware of that, all right.
Absolutely. So I'm just saying, those are just things that we would set as expectations and then that might. You know, if somebody were not to abide by that, then it would change the way we read their comment or whether or not we.
And I think it's important to whatever guidelines we set up. I, I think it's important that they are able to be translated into a live public meeting when we get back to that someday, so, um. Trying to think about things from both the virtual meeting angle and the in-live, in-person meeting as well.
And my other thought too is to make sure that we have a time limit. I think that's really important.
Are people good with a, like, twenty minute total allotment and two minutes per person, per, per comment or?
Yeah.
Does that work?
Uh, Matt, what you thinking? Yes, thumbs up, thumbs down, where are we at?
Is, is twenty closer to the norm? I, I thought I had seen some as, as maybe closer to thirty total.
Some of, of the ones that I looked at, I looked at probably about eight nearby districts, um, that had anywhere from ten to thirty. So twenty was kind of a middle number, um, but. If, if you feel like we would need, I mean, if, if, if we set a two minute per comment, that's fifteen people. In a thirty minute timeframe, it's ten comments in a twenty minute kind of timeframe, so.
It's. It's only twenty minutes, people go back to back, um, I mean, there's always transition times. I think we should go with thirty minutes. I mean, not to be a dork. Just, just, um, just to have it, just to lessen the chance that we shut people off when the time comes. Um, we can sit for thirty minutes. Yes, we sit for hours anyways. My, my other thought though, and we're going to do this because it's better than nothing, but it's, but it's kind of crappy, um. To, uh, you know, for people to type under pressure, um, a coherent comment, um. You know, is, is, we're not going to get robust thought, uh, out of, out of what, um, what people have been, you know, well, you know. Not, not to be silly, you know, sports are great, my, 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 you know, you can only, you can, typing is harder to do than speaking. Um, and doing it under, under time pressure is going to be tough for people. Um, but it's better than nothing and, and that's what we can do now, um. But I, I mean, I was also, I was also very happy with all the letters that we got, um, over the last week, you know, because obviously those took a lot more time to type. Um, and, and put a lot, a lot of people put a lot of thought into them. Um, and so I, I would like us to have some procedures on how to. Encourage collecting letters from the public also. I mean, it doesn't have to be, that's not public comment, but it is still. Uh, you know, under open meeting law, but it's still, it's still people sending us their thoughts, um. And I know, I know our, our email addresses are on the board, on the website, which is great, um. But like, like Amber said, um, you know, simpler is better too, you know, can, can the board, can the school have a dedicated, one single email address for, that gets sent to all board members?
I mean, an easy way too, if they email Sarah's district clerk, then. You know, she's your clerk, so she could then forward everything to each of you. That, that's one avenue where you could.
No, I mean, just anything like that. I mean, I saw one letter that got sent to, you know, they had twelve people on it, but they left Sherry off, um, you know, just because they missed. They missed a board member and so I sent it over to Sherry, um. You know, and that's, you know, and, and, and I'm sure that was just an accident, um. And so, so to encourage, you know, simpler means of collecting a bunch of emails, I think, would help people send letters. Thank you.
I mean, we, we could set up a. Board at Middle Lakes email address that, that goes to Sarah, just like. Oh no, just like, like the real, there are, there are about eight of us who are on the reopening schools at middle lakes.org, you know.
Yep.
So that's a way to do it, or, or we could set it up too, that, you know, you're all linked to it directly and Sarah's.
I think that makes a lot of sense to have, um, all seven of us and Sarah receive.
Yeah, just the group email basically.
Yeah.
That, I mean, that's, I mean, Bill, Bill could have that set up in probably five minutes.
No, I know, it's easy. I'm, thank you. I mean, it's, it seems easy or it's easy, but I think it's good, um. Another, another thought, maybe, and this is a little bit harder and I don't, I don't know about it, but I know a board for another governmental agency that, um. That acknowledges letters that are sent. I mean, we, they don't read them, but they acknowledge who sent letters in, um, and thank them for them, um. And I don't know if we want to do anything like that, but, but to, to more formally acknowledge the letters that we got. From the public on, on issues. You know, not, not read them, but, but say we got letters.
Not, not read them out loud, you mean?
Not read them out loud. Yeah, yeah, not read them out loud as, as part of public comment, but, but still, um. You know, really, really, really push the point home that, that we, we do read those letters and that, and that we value getting them.
So I, I think Amber did a nice job of that tonight as far as. You know, because we had gotten so many, um.
Yep.
I think that was good. So yeah, I mean, if, if we continue to make it a point that we recognize people that send us letters and. I think that would be good.
Okay, it would be as simple as, as an automated response to that group email to start, right, just a, a automatic reply that was a thank you. And then obviously you take the next step at meetings and such to thank them.
Yeah, no good, man. It's, yeah.
We can do that too.
Um, so Jake, are you thinking that it would be good for people to be able to submit potentially a public comment even through that email? Because it does allow for more time and space to compose something that's more.
I mean, that was, that was my suggestion, you know, two board meetings ago, or.
Right.
You know, and.
Potentially.
You know. I, you know, I, but I think we should try this, this forum method first, uh, for public comment, um. And see how that goes. And hopefully, hopefully we're all back in person sometime and, and we take that out anyways.
All right, so thirty minutes total allotment, two minutes. Per comment. Zoom, uh. What's that thing called again?
A zoom webinar.
Panel.
Webinar.
Panel webinar.
Yep.
And then maybe just streamlining the way people can get a hold of, hold of us through email.
Yeah, so at the bottom of the board page or the top, you know, where we can make a, a single. We keep all your individual email addresses, I imagine, right?
Yeah.
Then add the centralized, um, email that then is then, that's then linked to everybody's email. That way it's, they can just click on an email address and it'll go to everybody and they don't have to type in. Address and worry about missing somebody.
Any other thoughts? No? All right, we are. Yeah, thank you. All right, we are on to item eight. Um, I do know that the agenda reflects that we have an executive session, but. Um, that has been changed, so I just need a motion to adjourn.
I'm making a motion.
May I have a second? Is there any discussion on adjourn, to adjourn? Nope, okay, all in favor? Any opposed? Thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.